Okay.
I've had a bad feeling. Sorry, I'm being, I'm mad at myself today. I don't really feel it.
Mr. Davis, how are you, sir?
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for, for being here. We'll go ahead and get started. This is a city council special meeting. Today is July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. It is five thirty-two P M. And we are currently at the city council chambers, one hundred South Monroe Street, Eagle Pass, Maverick County, Texas. We'll start with a quorum. We do have a full quorum today with everyone present. Moving on to a moment of reverence. And, uh, well, on behalf of the city of Eagle Pass, Chief Mello, I want to extend our condolences for the passing of your father, Mr. Mello. He served the community for many years. I've, I've seen all, all the comments of so many people that love your father. He worked with the city of Eagle Pass as public works director. And the city of Eagle Pass lost a good man. On behalf of the city, we want to extend our condolences to you, chief, to your whole family, to your father's friends, and everybody that knew him. So if we could please have a moment out of respect for your Mello. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may.
Please.
The city has also lost, um, Mr. Juan Raúl Benavides. He was a former, uh, city councilman from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety-one. So I would also like to hold a moment of silence for him.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Citizens Communications and Recognitions. We do have Victor and Marisa Pader that, that signed up for Citizens Communications. Gustavo Pasado.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Nada más para, para darle un poco de información. Esto es, eh, un diálogo que está limitado a, a tres minutos. No es para faltar el respeto o parar, pero es para todos.
Entendido. Está bien. El propósito de que nosotros estamos aquí es porque se autorizó un permiso de resta de alberca en una zona completamente residencial como es Heritage Farms. Entonces esto ha provocado entre los, los vecinos que estamos hablando, verdad, que a veces es imposible entrar hasta nuestros propios, uh, casas, verdad, porque están invadiendo la entrada, porque deja mucha basura tirada. Y yo no me explico cómo en otras zonas residenciales no dan ese permiso y en la de nosotros. Sí, ya se les puse al señor Plácino, y él me dice que lo, que haga la, la llamada de, de forma anónima para reportar a los vecinos. ¿Por qué tengo que hacerlo de forma anónima? Si él dio el permiso, él te dio, ha venido a supervisar el lugar y haber dado una constancia de que no iba a perjudicar a nadie ese permiso, verdad. Además, estoy hablándole al señor Monúa para exponerle también la situación, y no hay oídos en esta ciudad. No sé qué está pasando, pero nadie escucha. Nadie quiere atender los teléfonos. Por eso tuve que venir en persona para ver qué se puede remediar con esta situación. Creo que es el resumen y el síntesis. Ya está usted a ver qué.
Muchas gracias por darnos esta información. Para hacer una, yo no sabía de esta situación, pero ahora ya, ya sabemos, y lo vamos a platicar con, con el gerente, y luego alguien le va a llamar con.
Pues con todo respeto, pero así está la ciudad ahorita.
Okay. Gracias.
Up next, we have the Consent Agenda items. We have items one through seven. At this time, I'll ask council, if you want to withdraw any of these items and discuss them individually, please let me know, and we can do that. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve items one through seven. We have a, a motion by Mayor Potem Davis, a second by Councilwoman Garcia. All in favor? Unanimous. Item number eight, Resolutions. Consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, appointing members to the Eagle Pass Library Board. Ms. Ita, tú.
Yes, um, these, they're, um, their membership expired on July third, and so they're all eligible for reappointment. And I do have Councilwoman Nina, who already appointed Ms. Isama Diaria. Everybody else has an open appointment.
I'd like to reappoint this, the same person that I had appointed.
Okay.
Idalia, I believe it was.
You on the, this we have on there?
Yeah.
Okay, um. Mr. Davis, you have Irma González. Place two, Clelia Delgado Valdez. Place three, Mariel Ramírez. Uh, place four was Mr. Ramsey Cantú, and place five is Idalia Salinas.
Okay. Well, I, I'd like to reappoint my appointee, council.
I will consider the same. So long as she's, I mean, they have all been attending. Do we have a record of their attendance?
Have they met?
I don't believe they met.
I don't think they've met.
No, then I would like to leave the same one. I think she can contribute, you know, if needed.
I would like to reappoint Clelia Valdez.
I'm fine with occurring.
Okay. So do we need a motion to reappoint the people that you just stated?
Right.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion to reappoint these people by Mayor Potem Davis, and a second by Councilwoman Cruz. Discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Nine, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of Eagle Pass, Texas, appointing members to the Animal Grievance Board.
And this is the same, Mayor. Um, they're, um, this expired in June, and so all are eligible for reappointment, and you'd like, I'd like, I can.
Please.
So place one is Ms. Jenny Dorsey. Place two, Stephanie Valdez. Place three, Letizia Rayburn. Place four, Kimberly Clark Viesteros. And place five, Terry Ramírez.
I would like to stay with the same person, please.
I would also like to reappoint my appointee.
I would like to reappoint Stephanie Valdez as well.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to.
Yeah, I'll leave this thing as well. I'll leave Dr. Dorsey.
To reappoint the, the people just read on the record. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mayor Potem Davis and a second by Councilwoman Cruz. The only thing is, I'm hoping that these boards meet, and maybe we can, we can have a report of what, what comes out of these boards.
Is, is it stated in the ordinance how often they should meet?
It really depends on the board. Like this one, the animal grievance, it really depends. It's, like it says, it's a grievance board. So it's on a need basis.
Only if we have a grievance.
Yes.
What about the library board?
The library board should have.
Ms. Chris?
It's, uh, Imelda had said that it was every third Wednesday of the month, and then she, whenever we met the first time, uh, they had said that we were going to agree to meet like once a, every quarter. It's a quarter.
Okay.
Yeah.
Once they do meet, you'll give us a report on the meeting?
Yes, uh-huh, and we had met with the group that's right, that's currently right now.
I saw.
But there was, uh, we had appointed, I think, uh, at the time, Mr. Cantú was appointed for the chair, and then I believe that he, I don't know, they had said that they had removed him because he had one county judge that were going to appoint somebody else, and then he was reappointed as, I think, a county representative.
Okay. Thank you.
So then your seat might need to be reappointed, right? Or no?
Yeah, I already chose.
Yeah. So we had a, we had a motion, a second, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Item ten, consideration and possible approval of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, appointing a member to the International Bridge System Board of Trustees.
This is just for one member, for Mayor Potem's, um, appointee, and he is not eligible for reappointment. It's Mr. Noi Andrew, there you go.
Right. I spoke to someone else, but they haven't come, they haven't confirmed to make sure that they would be able to make the means. I'm going to go and table it as of right now.
Okay. Is that a, a motion to table?
Yes.
We have a motion to table this item for, until the next meeting by Mayor Potem Davis, second by Councilwoman Cruz. Discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Item tabled. Uh, moving up to the, the workshop. Unless there's any item, there's no one from out of town, right? That needs to be, no. All right. Workshop eleven, Discussion of the City of Eagle Pass Budget for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-three, Twenty Twenty-four, and Possible Action on Directive to City Administration Regarding Same.
Mr. Jesse, how are you? I hope all of you did receive the information that was sent out last week. There was a summary report, and then there was a very lengthy, detailed report. It's very, very itemized.
It's still downloaded.
Totally about two hundred and seventy pages.
Yeah.
Um, of course, there's still a lot of time to review and discuss this information. Um, so as we mentioned at the last meeting, the, the goal is that by August eleventh, we will have a balanced proposed budget for council, and then we will have a month to really discuss that. Right now, the budget is still not balanced, but this is the purpose of the workshops, to make sure that we get the priorities of the council, to make sure that when we balance the budget, we address those priorities. So again, going off of this summary screen that I, that I mentioned is really, really the, the highlight of where we are and where we need to be. We always focus on that first number of your net change, which is for the general fund, showing that we still need to cut about one point two million dollars. If you recall, that number was about five point three million two weeks ago. Um, so we didn't make significant headway, but you know, we're still not there. Uh, just to recap how we got there, it really came down to capital equipment. There, we met with several departments, discussed, you know, how we could stagger these over several years, and we came up with a priority list, and we were able to knock that number down significantly. So one point two million dollars relatively is pretty close to where we were when we began.
Way better than five, right?
So with your permission, we really want to break this up into two workshops in the next two weeks, um, just because there's a lot of information, you know, that's, we want to make sure we give it sufficient amount of time. So in this workshop, we really want to go through the special revenue funds. And then in two weeks, we'll go through the general fund, the solid waste fund, the bridge fund, and the capital improvement programs. So starting with the Public Library Fund. So the Public Library Fund, uh, most of the contribution for its operations does come from the general fund. Uh, we do get a fifteen thousand dollar contribution from Maverick County, and operating revenue is three thousand dollars, mostly book fines, uh, sale of cards, things of that nature. Uh, expenditures, uh, primarily it's personnel, followed by supplies, contracts, contract services, other services and charges, and capital outlay. Under capital outlay, the majority of that is books. About sixty thousand is books, and then eighteen thousand is repairs to, to the facility itself. Um, as you'll see, the expenditures exceed the revenue. Uh, their net change is a negative two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, however, the fund does have two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in fund balance. Fund balance is essentially savings from previous years, so we're pretty much recommending using that, leaving a fund balance of forty-one thousand. There's really no requirement that there be any fund balance in this fund. The next special revenue fund is M B C P A. So it's a grant that the city receives basically every year. Uh, the only item that I do want to highlight is just that, as with most grants, the grant revenue doesn't really cover all of the expenses. So in this case, the city does have to put in fifty-five thousand dollars. Any questions in this program?
Um, I do have questions on the, on the library board program.
Okay.
So for the Public Library Fund, how many, uh, where, where are we looking at for personnel on this? Have there been any changes?
There is no recommended changes. I know we did discuss with, uh, expanding part-time, uh, because we do, we do want to expand operations, especially when we do open the, the Technology Center. So we do need to have that manned. Uh, but it's still, like I said, we're still not finalized yet, but as, with the numbers here, do not have any changes, increases to personnel.
Um, I know that we've been, uh, in ongoing collaboration with, with the Public Library to kind, to, to expand programming, right? Uh, if we were to receive, uh, grant funding specifically for some of these programs, uh, how feasible would it be to amend the budget to, to, to reflect that surplus of revenue?
So it would depend. I'm assuming that the grant program would not cover the personnel costs. It would be more operating costs, or would be?
You know, right now, I'm, I'm kind of like in the writing stages, so it can include whatever we want it to be.
So amending the budget, um, we still have, like I said, we still have two months before we actually adopt the budget. So even after we present the proposed budget, let's say we find out some new information, the council can still make changes through mid-September. Uh, if it's after that point, then we do have to come back through ordinance to amend the budget, especially if it includes personnel. We do need to amend the budget to add full-time positions.
So if we were to make changes on this, it would be better to make them that?
To make them, yes, it's quicker.
Okay. So maybe we can sit down, and I can show you my, my budget and how we can collaborate.
Yes, definitely. Um, the next, uh, special revenue fund is the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Grant. Much like the previous one, we do receive this annually. Uh, we do receive three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, but the same thing. Uh, it does not cover, cover all of the expenses, so we do have to contribute forty-six thousand dollars to this.
When the, under personnel, who is that?
So there is, uh, this, this is a very special type of program. Um, so they're assigned under DEA. Uh, we do have probably four positions and two, uh, clerical positions. Uh, however, some of these positions are actually outsourced to Maverick County and Dimmitt County. So that, they provide their manpower, we reimburse them through this way. But this is the task force that's assigned to DEA.
He said something about forty-six thousand dollars or something like that at the end, but I don't see it reflected there on the contribution.
Yes.
I was still reading somewhere before I feel, don't forget.
The next.
The Dimmitt County personnel for that is, are they housed here? Like, do they travel, or is that an area that we're serving through this grant?
I'll refer to the police department.
If I understand the question correctly, we'd have actually six positions altogether, three that are actually assigned here in Eagle Pass, Maverick County, and actually two clerks that come for that too. Uh, the big benefit on that is that, um, some of the forfeiture of funding that they actually seize comes back to the police department. And we use a lot of that funding to actually assist the city and buy in equipment, some of the things that we've done in the past.
Do, is that reflected in the budget? In this part of the budget? The, the, where, where chief is, is referring to?
In terms of the cost.
The, the acquisitions and the stuff, basically what comes back into the city as revenue?
So we do have a separate fund for confiscated funds. Uh, those are very hard to budget for because, let's say, there's an incident that happens today. It could be years before we actually receive the money. Because depending on the incident, it goes to the federal government. They determine, they have to go through the legal process of seizing, formally seizing and forfeiting those funds. Then they do a calculation on the participation. So there's, in the system, we, we can view what's in process. There's items that have been there for more than ten years. So it's, it's really hard for us to budget, so we really don't reflect those.
And do we have restrictions on how those funds can be used?
Essentially, it is everything for law enforcement operations. Um, legally, it's the police chief who determines how to spend those funds. And we've used it for a lot of equipment mostly, or.
They're used for law enforcement purposes. And there's a whole book that defines what the usage is.
So the next fund, the special revenue fund that we have is the recreational programs and facilities. So this is basically under the Parks Department. So this is broken down into actually two items. We have the operations of the sports complex and recreational programs. So the actual, uh, programs themselves generate almost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. A hundred and seventy-six thousand through concession stands, uh, twenty-six thousand through the swimming pool. And then, as you can see, the general fund has to contribute over a million dollars. And then room tax contributes a hundred thousand dollars for reimbursements on costs for tournaments. Uh, so that's that total there. Uh, as you can see, for recreational programs, the vast majority goes to personnel, uh, and supplies, contracted services, and other services and charges. The sports complex, uh, this is a wide variety of expenses. Uh, we do have the contracts, a lot of contracts for, uh, for the maintenance, uh, of the facility. Uh, the personnel there is basically, most of that is the part-timers who, who are there throughout the operations. For supplies and materials, a big component of that is the actual items that we sell at the concession stand.
What are other services and charges? What falls under that?
Uh, so what the components of that are basically utilities. There's sixty thousand dollars in, uh, electrical services and twenty-six thousand dollars in water services.
Okay. Thank you.
Is a million dollar the usual amount that we transfer from the general fund every year? Well, since it's been open?
It's been growing, especially as the need for personnel has been growing. Uh, I think we see that the use is pretty high. So I know Parks wants to make sure it's adequately staffed. Um, but from the first year, it was about nine hundred thousand, so it's increased slightly.
It's not a big difference.
Now it's about a million dollars. So overall, I think this is like the perfect example. You know, the user fees that we're charging do not cover the cost of operating all of the leagues and the sports complex itself. So it's, it's a net loss. I think we, we do feel that, of course, it's a positive for the community.
Absolutely.
However, you know, it's one of the, with the discussions we're having on the fees, where we have to find a balance on user fees, uh, and the cost to operate some of our, uh, some of our functions. Um, Main Street Program. So Main Street Program, most of the operations are generated by, by resources from the International Bridge. The city council did adopt an ordinance a few years ago, allocating that amount every year for the different programs in Main Street. Just to give you a little bit of background on the actual program. So of course, this covers the operations of the Arts Center. You see that personnel line item, that's where the Arts Center coordinator. Um, but within the actual programs that are funded through the Main Street Program, we do have the, the facade improvement grant. We do have the business improvement grant, and then we have all the expenses for the different events that do happen at the Arts Center. So for each one of those grant programs, we do have allocated a hundred thousand dollars each for the facade and the business improvement grant.
How much?
A hundred thousand. And just a little bit of background. So last year was the first year that the council allowed expansion, just not necessarily focused on Main Street, small businesses. So I know we do need to discuss, uh, before we adopt the budget, if the city wishes to continue that expansion or limit it to the Main Street areas.
Who chooses the areas?
Who chooses the areas?
The areas to use the funds on?
So Economic Development proposed the, the guidelines, and of course, those were adopted by, by council. Um, but the two areas that were designated were those small businesses on El Indio Highway and Dari Boulevard. Those that are, you know, very visible in the community.
Yes.
But again, those guidelines will have to come back to council again, if council wishes to continue. Um, the next special revenue fund, it's a relatively small fund, municipal court, uh, special funds. So in some fines that are assessed, there's a portion of these fines that are allocated for municipal court use, and it includes technology improvements, security improvements, things of that nature. The, the total revenue that we estimate to be collected is about twenty-two thousand, and that's allocated to the maintenance of their system. The next fund is the Convention Center and Tourism Fund. So again, this fund, like the recreation fund, is broken into two operations. One is ICT, and then one is marketing. So the revenues, sorry about that. The revenues for this fund come mostly from hotel occupancy tax. Uh, members transfer from the general fund, and the actual facility, the ICT, generates about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So for the International Center for Trade, uh, the most expensive item there is other services and charges, which are basically the utilities. It's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just for the utilities for that facility. Uh, for marketing, the largest component is the personnel. Yeah, we'll, we'll have a, I guess, a more detailed discussion when we get to talking about hotel occupancy tax. I believe that's the last slide. Uh, any questions regarding these funds? The next one, again, it's a relatively small fund. It's called, it's P E G, Public Education and Government Access. So this is a franchise, a one percent franchise tax on telecommunications companies, and it's specifically for the city channel. It's, it's basically getting our message out, educating the public as to how and what is going on with their government. Um, so we bring in about thirty-two thousand dollars. The only restriction is that that can only be used for equipment. Cannot be used for personnel or supplies. The next special revenue fund is storm drainage. So most of us see this fee on our water bill. It's a five-dollar-a-month, uh, fee. And it generates just under six hundred thousand dollars. Most of that is already allocated. We did, uh, have a bond issuance, and so we do have to contribute, uh, part of this to pay off that bond for the different detention ponds and storm drainage improvements that are underway. And we do have an allocation of a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, that is very specifically for the maintenance of our existing system. So the next one is streets and sidewalks. So for streets and sidewalks, um, it does not generate any revenue itself. Uh, it comes from a combination of contribution from Water Works and a contribution from the general fund. And so that, the one point two million dollars that are generated only go towards supplies. It does not cover personnel. It is just the materials needed for the streets and sidewalks.
What about the street cuts? Uh, it is my understanding that before we used to charge, and then we didn't, I mean, because that, that's a good income, and then we take care of it, and we spend on material, and.
Yes.
And sometimes somebody else closes the streets, and they're not the way they're supposed to. So is there an option there that we can change that and, and get a little bit more of, like before?
So I believe there's an item in executive session to discuss the, the agreement regarding, which includes street cuts. It's several different items, but the street cut process. But yes, you're right. It is an issue that we've had for years. Um, the agreement has changed back and forth over the last several years. Uh, we do feel that, you know, the issue is, getting from Public Works, is that if it's not done right, we have to go back earlier than we would have. And so it's either we make sure it gets done right by either doing it ourselves or us contracting it out and getting reimbursed, or, you know, having penalties for not doing the construction correctly, if it does fail earlier. But it's something that we will discuss in executive session. Um, for this fund, we do have an item for capital outlay. So just like when the previous one, we talked about fund balance. Uh, when money is saved or revenues are higher than, than expected, we do generate fund balance. And so, yes, expenses are higher than revenues. However, we plan on using fund balance to fund that equipment that's necessary for the streets department. The next one is capital replacement. So capital replacement is honestly a very, very important fund. Um, we know our equipment is, is aging, and we know that we cannot do many of our services without the necessary equipment. And, uh, the, the capital replacement fund was created several years ago, and it's funded at the end of the year. So, you know, when we adopt a budget, it's a balanced budget. We estimate our revenues or expenses, but of course, it's, it's their estimates. And so very often, we have extra money that comes in, or expenses aren't, uh, all spent. And so whenever there's that leftover funds at the end of the year. And so whenever there's that leftover funds at the end of the year, most of it comes here because we know that there's an expectation that we will have to fund equipment in the future. So the fund balance in this fund is just under 1.4 million, but we are expected to spend just over a million dollars in necessary equipment across various departments. In your booklet, the last page does have a list of the equipment requested. And then the last fund that we want to talk about is hotel occupancy tax. So hotel occupancy tax is, you know, it's been used for several very important projects, but I wanted to make sure we go over what the actual eligible uses are. So the actual law itself has a longer list, but because of our population, we have certain limitations on those uses. So what we can use them for is the construction improvements and operation of the convention center or visitor information center, operating expenses for conventions, advertising programs, promotion of the arts, sorry, my throat is getting dry. Historic restoration projects, sporting events. For sporting events, there's a requirement that at least 50% of the participants be from out of town, signage directing tourists, and transportation from hotels to tourist destinations. I did put a note at the bottom because this will become an option moving forward, venue tax. So right now, the tax that we assess to hotels locally is 7%. There is a state portion, but the local portion is 7%. For the venue tax, it would have to be adopted by election, but it'll allow us to increase 2%, which is about 350,000 dollars. That money could be used for facilities and venues that are used by tourists. So when we talk about CIP, we have to keep this as an option for funding projects that may fall under that definition. So within hotel tax, so hotel tax has been growing. I think we see it. I think that's why we have so many hotels that are coming to the community. But this upcoming year, we expect just over 1.1 million dollars. Almost half of that is going to the ICT for its operations and for its debt. We have the 100,000 dollars transferred for the sports complex. 17,000 dollars for museum operations, it's just basically utilities and things of that nature. We do have a contribution to the Chamber of Commerce for 60,000 dollars. For promotion of the arts, 150,000. The historic restoration program, 200,000. And then other eligible uses, 124. Basically, that we set aside for things that come up during the year.
It is my understanding, maybe I'm wrong, and correct me if I'm wrong, on the hotel occupancy tax, we can pay a salary or two from there, right?
Depending on what it's for, yes, but things like
So let's say marketing, I mean, it can apply there if we're short on marketing because I see the expenses on that end. So maybe it can apply because they're all related, I mean, it's all related.
It's only your marketing link for our side, not just marketing the city.
Yeah, but I mean, it can be applied from there, right? I mean, if we're short.
Yeah, so in general, the two rules are any expense has to be directly tied to putting heads in beds, and it has to fall under one of the eligible categories. So if we can justify, if the council justifies that those two things are being met, then it does qualify.
So technically, if we were to use it for marketing, it would, someone's role would have to be either, like, very clearly defined for that out-of-town criteria? Or just be 100% FTE just dedicated to that, or part-time?
Like, we can make a determination that, you know, if you say the marketing department, 25% is used for out-of-town marketing, well, then we could claim 25% of that. We just have to make that determination legally documented, and then we can do that.
Now, I know that a lot of community partnerships happen through this fund, right? Like, I know that we have partnerships with borderlines, different organizations throughout the community that are able to tap into this fund. So I think if we were to significantly reduce it, we would also see a significant reduction in the amount of community activities and community partnerships that we could engage in.
That is correct. One thing that I did want to point out is the fund balance. So over the last several years, we have not been using all of the allocated funds. Over the last two years, it's been because we've been underestimating revenues. It's been growing exponentially.
But also, I mean, we have three hotels coming in, so that's gonna, you know, that's gonna go higher. So that's why I'm considering that maybe it's gonna be enough to actually not be in red numbers on the marketing and maybe can be applied if, and others, the possibility, just to consider.
Just a word of caution with the new hotels, because we do have those reimbursement agreements. We probably won't, even after they open, we probably won't see anything until after two years.
Okay, got it.
That fund balance, it's pretty sizable. What can that be used for?
Yes, and so one of the concerns that we did have is actually with the Riskin Building, because it is a historic building. And with restoration projects, you know, we get these bids, it gets designed, but ultimately, when you start opening things up, you don't know what you're gonna find. And so we wanted to be really careful with this funding, just in case we had those overruns at Riskin. This is something we can tap into as a historic building. But if we could use it, the last time we used this fund balance was for the public library. We used, I believe, 2 million dollars from hotel occupancy tax.
We don't expect it to go higher, that project.
No, we don't, but, you know, we want to make sure, at least we have that so that we don't have to cut in other areas. So if that stays on budget and on target, then, you know, we will be able to use this for other items. And that's all the special revenue funds. Like I said, we can discuss anything you would like, of course, today or throughout the next two weeks. But in two weeks, we'll bring back the more detailed information on the general fund, the solid waste fund, and the bridge fund, which honestly, that's where most of the employees are and most of the expenses are.
When are we gonna discuss the list of projects, Jesse?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, and then we'll discuss that
At the next meeting?
At the next meeting, yes.
The order, kind of where we're looking at?
Correct, the five-year CIP.
All right.
Yes.
Any questions from council?
Just to piggyback on what Councilman Cruz was talking about on marketing. One of the things, I mean, I guess if we can just ask maybe for the next time our marketing manager, like her supplies and materials, if they're like for promotional item that she distributes out of town, that's an easy qualifier for room tax. So that might be something you can transfer out, you know, that's an easy deal.
Will we have a balanced budget by the next meeting?
We will be very close. We do want to go through the remaining funds just to get the final priorities from council, and then at the subsequent, at the following meeting, we will be bouncing back.
We might be able to give her more. To utilize to do that, I mean, if we're gonna be using one of the funds.
In regards to salaries, this budget includes an adjustment of approximately 3%?
The average is 3%, yes. It's a scaled system, that's one thing we have to remember. So it's employees who are early on in the career get larger because we want people to get to a higher salary faster. So later on in their careers, it's 2% after you get to the midpoint, but average is
Average.
But we're including everyone, right?
So we'll provide the list, because there's certain handful that are different circumstances, and they're justified. But what we do is when we do the proposed budget, we give you a list of everybody and show the effects on everybody.
When will we get that?
After the following workshop.
Excellent. Thank you. This is just for information, right?
Correct.
Unless you have any guidance or any special request.
No, no, no. I look forward to seeing the CIP list, and then at the next meeting, we should have more info. Thank you, Jesse. We'll go ahead and move on to item 12. Other business, consideration and possible approval of a consultant contract between the City of Eagle Pass and Eagle Pass Independent School District to conduct emergency medical technician EMT courses with the Eagle Pass Fire Department instructors. Mr. Moruah, who's discussing?
Chief Calhoun.
Chief Calhoun.
Good afternoon, Mayor Council.
Chief.
This is a program that has, we've had in place for several years now, where the ISD contracts with instructors through the Eagle Pass Fire Department to provide the EMT courses for high school students. They reimburse the expenses, and I recommend that we continue that program.
Thank you, chief.
Do we have a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve by Councilwoman
A second.
A second by Councilwoman Diaz. Discussion, all in favor, unanimous. Thirteen, consideration and possible approval of a request to solicit professional services for Camino Real International Bridge Deck Expansion. Mr. Valderas.
Yes, look, good afternoon.
Mayor Council.
Good afternoon.
And I'm sorry, I was looking at something, which item is this?
This is the item about the
I know we have several on here.
The bridge deck expansion.
Oh, yes. So Mayor and Council, we bring this request to you. I know at the last council meeting, we proposed to allow us to go out to, for solicitations for the bridge master plan. This, again, is another request that's coming from our city administration and the bridge system to allow us to do the same, but to go out for professional services to begin the process for this proposed improvement to the bridge deck. As y'all are aware, we have an ongoing project that's going to improve the access to Bridge Number Two on the US side. If you haven't gone to Mexico through Bridge Number Two, they themselves have a similar project that's doing the same thing on their side, improving the access to Bridge Number Two. So we want to get ahead of this proposed growth to the Port of Eagle Pass and not allow for our bridge to become a bottleneck for the, not only the crossing of commerce, but of our passenger vehicle. So what we're proposing is to go out for solicitations for an RFQ to get proposals from, or requests for qualifications from vendors or engineers that can assist us and begin the process. It is a lengthy process in time, so the sooner we get started, the sooner we can, we can begin the actual, this project can actually come off the ground. So we come here to ask you to please allow us to put out the solicitation so that we can start looking at what vendors are interested in this project, and we can make a selection.
This is, like you said, a very important project, and basically, this in the future would allow maybe to add lanes to the bridge, right?
Correct. Part of this process is, we currently have a presidential permit for the bridge itself. This process has been recommended to us by several consultants. We've seen it been done at other ports along the Texas-Mexico water. It's a quicker way of adding capacity to your port without having to go through the whole process of obtaining a new presidential permit. So based on the recommendations from our consultants, we feel like this is in the best interest of the City of Eagle Pass, the Port of Eagle Pass, to continue to bring these improvements, to continue to attract more trade through the Port of Eagle Pass.
Absolutely. Well, we all entertain a motion. I believe Councilwoman Cruz made a motion to approve, and a second by Mayor Proton Davis. Discussion, the sooner the better, Mr. Valderas.
Thank you so much.
Port is growing, so we're going full force. We have a motion, a second, discussion, all in favor, unanimous. Thank you.
Yes, the next one, too.
That was thirteen. Moving on to item fourteen, consideration and possible awarding/rejection of a request for proposal, RFP number 2023-008 for the City of Eagle Pass toll collection system.
Yes, so good afternoon again, Mayor and Council. That's why I was confused, because I know we have several items on here. I just wanted to make sure I spoke on the correct one. So yes, here, Mr. Rodriguez is allowing me to present this one because this is a solicitation for the bridge system. And we come to submit a recommendation based on the evaluation of the proposals we received for the toll system, for the international bridge system. We received a total of three proposals. A to B came in at 7,558,798. E Transit came in at 4,194,978 cents. P Square came in at 4,088,781 with 10 cents. After the evaluation by the evaluation panel that included Mr. Daniel Ibarra, Mr. Jose Menchaca, Mr. Danny McGee, and myself, Romero Valderas, we've come to the determination that we would like to recommend that the city move forward, I'm sorry about that, with P Square, to select P Square to be the vendor for this project and allow city manager to begin the contract negotiation so that we can, to get this project moving forward.
I had a chance to look at this item, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion from council.
Someone?
We have a motion to approve.
The recommendations, sir.
The recommendation by Mayor Proton Davis, a second by Councilwoman Garcia, discussion.
Mayor, if I may, you can also allow me to execute the agreement. I know Mr. Valderas said to negotiate, but we can also execute.
Yes. Can we amend your motion to include?
Genuinely noted.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. We'll amend Mayor Proton's motion to include execution. We had a motion, a second, discussion, all in favor, unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, sir. Item fifteen, consideration and possible approval of an inter-local agreement between the City of Eagle Pass, the Maverick County Hospital District, and Maverick County.
So for this item, I know that we have some of the public health interns that are here to present. But before they begin their presentation, I would like to ask, we do have representation from the MCHD board here. We have our chairman and our vice chairwoman that are both here. I don't know if either of you would like to say anything in support of the public health department. It's not absolutely necessary, but I would like to get some input.
I guess I do the lucky star.
Yes, right.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Councilmen, men and women. And of course, Mr. Moruah, of course. First of all, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for the partnership that we have started. It's been a little over a year and some months that we partnered to do this project. And so a lot of work has been done in order to get us off the ground and off and running. And so we're literally in the final stages of getting this ready, and we're here to present to you, so you can see the work that these young people have done for not only the City of Eagle Pass, but for Maverick County. And I just want to remind everyone that, you know, our partnership, again, with Maverick County Hospital District is self-service because one of the main focuses that we at the Maverick County Hospital District rely on is about providing service for our community, and that is our main interest. You know, provide the healthiest service that we can. It's not about making money, it's about making a healthier community for not only Eagle Pass, but for Maverick County. And so I thank you on behalf of our board, because this partnership has been great. And so we look forward to our continuation, and the kids have a great presentation, and I hope you all enjoy it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have Dr. Thomas that is joining us. He's, he has left the hospital. He's actually on call, and he came to join us today. So we want to briefly give him just a couple of moments to speak on the importance of public health before he has to rush back to the hospital.
Thank you.
Dr. Thomas, welcome, sir.
Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate you all taking time out to let me address everybody in the body, not just the council, but the community as well. So I view myself as somewhat of an expert on public health, not because I'm a physician, but because I've had the opportunity to be around public health all my life. My father was a physician. He worked diligently in trying to get African-Americans and people of color into medical school. And it's been shown how important it is to have somebody usually of your same race, how important it is to have those people be in the communities, and how positive impact they can have on that. So I view myself as a little bit of expert on that from a young kid, and then as a physician, what I'm doing in the community, obviously with the help of yourself, the hospital district and the hospital. But I'm just gonna go into a few quick points. Better management of patient care through engagement with primary care physicians, also community health systems such as UMC, the hospital district. That initially, for me, coming from outside of the community, allowed me to engage and then provide better health care by engaging with people such as Dr. Demora, Dr. Dos Santos, Dr. Hernandez, I could go on and on. But that allows me to provide better health care. So how does this, you know, play for patients? And so for patients, it allows for a reduction or avoidance in obesity, diabetes, hypertension, renal disease, which we have a lot of here in the community, behavioral health challenges for all ages. Additionally, routine and better management through the primary care physicians leads to lower emergency department utilization. So we don't have people coming in saying, hey, I've got a hangnail or a sore throat, where we have other people that are injured that really that really need the services of the emergency department and don't overwhelm the emergency department. This also leads to improved maternal and neonatal health care, which is extremely important, and which has been shown that we're having a lot of problems with maternal and neonatal health care recently in all communities. Additionally, this translates to kids missing fewer days of school, parents and adults missing fewer days of work, workforce stability, and greater productivity academically and fiscally for the entire community. An overall healthier and stronger community of educated consumers of health and a better way of life, this enhances wellness not only for the medical community, but also dental, behavioral sciences, and social services. How does this impact surgery? It impacts surgery by injuries, and people don't look at injuries as public health, but these are public health issues with people crossing. The majority of what I'm seeing are injuries in those individuals that are under and uninsured, so we're able to help them as well. So public health expands and spans across the entirety of medicine, but the bottom line of this is that the key takeaway is this reduces the burden and the cost of health care.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We did receive a package, so presentation or-
So, yes, Sebastian is going to be presenting on the work that has been done so far and kind of the data that we have to present to the community. We've also outlined some of our priorities and the things that are important to the Public Health Department and why it's necessary to advocate for a better healthcare system overall for all of us.
Good afternoon, Mayor, good afternoon, Council, and good afternoon, committee members. Thank you all for having us here and hearing our take on this side of the agenda. So to begin, we do have a brief table of contents where we will introduce the mission, introduction, problem, solution, and our impact. So to begin, the established Public Health Department in Eagle Pass seeks to improve the health and well-being of Maverick County through data-driven interventions. When I look at Eagle Pass, and I saw people like on my time here, I was born and raised in Eagle Pass, raised by a single mother who had to not only support myself, but my two sisters. Fortunately, we had the assistance of government. Without these government assistance, I would not be able to treat my ears, nose, and throat condition, which I had to severely travel to and from San Antonio to get my treatment. And at the age of seventeen, I was diagnosed with the atrial ventricular heart condition that required me to sit out for the remaining three years of my high school career, where I had to hang up the cleats and focus on academic, which has served me a great purpose as I can now self-reflect in my community and provide the necessary resources for the younger generation, and provide them the resources that we know they provide and live better, healthier lives moving forward. Our goal is to create a healthier, more resilient community where every individual has access to high-quality health care and the opportunity to thrive. As Dr. Thomas stated, the overall impact that the Public Health Department is, reduces the insurance cost. In Eagle Pass, we're currently seeing about a 30% rate of individuals who are uninsured. This 30% rate of uninsured individuals affects the population in general and increases the rate of chronic diseases. So we are administering a community health needs assessment where we had spent about two months in progress, and we have gained significant data from this presentation and survey that which we are conducting, where 21.4% of our residents, or 21.4% of the respondents, expressed dissatisfaction with the current health education efforts. Additionally, 24.8% were unaware of available healthcare providers and services. So how does this really affect us? When individuals are not aware of the services and existing assets that we have in Eagle Pass, you know, they seek this medical service elsewhere, like our sister city, Perez Negras, and San Antonio. Now, not everyone is fortunate enough to commute two hours to San Antonio or even cross the bridge to seek medical care. And so the initial and primary step for the Public Health Department is to, first of all, educate our community on the existing resources that we do have, you know, partner with our local health providers, and work with these local healthcare providers to reduce healthcare costs and grant equal treatment all around. With the individuals who were expressed dissatisfaction with our current health education efforts, this is seen with lower education levels in Eagle Pass. Eagle Pass is known to have lower education levels, and with lower education levels comes reduced health, and we lack the knowledge, and some of our individuals aren't so aware what to look for. And so making it a key priority to, you know, educate our community, host community events to where we can establish this relationship with our community, and they can entrust in the Eagle Pass Public Health Department as a bridging between our leaders and our community, and allowing them to have a voice to actively advocate and have us provide for them. Our proposal addresses these disparities by, again, implementing data-driven interventions that prioritize health education and literacy while acknowledging the shortage of healthcare professionals. We do have a lack of healthcare professionals in Eagle Pass, and that has a large toll on the amount of individuals who can be seen, and even then, the excessive degree of appointments. A key point that was brought up to me in my time at the community surveys is the long wait times for appointments and the severity. Individuals are having to wait almost a year to see an endocrinologist in Eagle Pass, where endocrinologists tackle the fight of diabetes, which is a leading issue in Eagle Pass, and it's a very prevalent disease that correlates with many chronic health conditions. Following, as I stated, the problem, our main problem is we're 30.3% of our individuals are uninsured. We do have 42% of our individuals suffering from obesity and overweight. 19% of our individuals are diagnosed with diabetes, and we do have a 7% prevalence of high disease. Whenever we look at these three leading chronic conditions, and these are actually leading deaths in the United States, primarily in Hispanics who are underserved, a lot of these stems off from just proper lack of health education and being aware of the qualities that one may, excuse me, one might possess. So just, again, this community education, the education, community, excuse me, community events that we will put together will advocate and make them aware of, you know, the importance of health screening, yearly checkups, and allow for individuals who don't have access to healthcare. As you see, our population-to-healthcare provider ratio is about 3,400 individuals per doctor. If you can, if you think about the task that a doctor may have, it's nearly impossible to see every single individual. So as a public health department, if we can help alleviate some of the stress from our healthcare professionals and provide some of these early preventative services to acknowledge some of these conditions at an early rate and provide an intervention to stabilize and kind of put a band-aid over these issues, we're on the right track. A large issue as we progress in this world is the need of mental health services. Where in Eagle Pass, there's a huge call for mental health services. About 40% of our individuals in our surveys stated that we do need to prioritize psychologists and psychiatrists in Eagle Pass, and I'm all in for that. A lot of these individuals who don't know how to seek out and how to cope with a lot of their problems end up dealing with these internally, and that correlates with poor health. As provided a quick figure provided by the 2022 census using the American Community Survey, that states about 31% of our population has less than a high school degree. Our second-leading, 26.3%, have only a high school or GED equivalent degree. Again, lower education levels correlate with lower, poor health and just knowledge of health and being active. Our solution, of course, I come here to present my idea and kindly ask for your consideration in an interlocal agreement. This interlocal agreement would allow for the partnership between the City of Eagle Pass, Maverick County, Maverick County Hospital District, and local healthcare providers, again, to provide these services for our community, specifically the individuals who are underserved in our community. We are, like I said, conducting a community needs assessment that's giving me crucial and needed data, which we don't have in Eagle Pass. The lack of data in Eagle Pass has resulted in Eagle Pass being one of the hardest places hit by the COVID and the pandemic. This was a result of, you know, lack of infrastructure and lack of strategy, and, you know, with that resulted in inaccurate rates of the pandemic. We were kind of guesstimating on who and who was affected and who was not, but having an established public health department would allow for proper documentation and conducting of exams. The Public Health Education Initiative will educate our community on the benefits of preventative care and healthy behaviors. Our service locations, like I said, we will partner up with the Maverick County Hospital District and local healthcare providers, along with any existing community health worker organizations, you know. The need for, the lack of healthcare professionals allows for us to heavily rely on community health workers and these amazing individuals who are willing to go out of their way and serve the people, and that's what it's all about, serving the people and allowing, and all of us working towards providing for the common good of Eagle Pass and providing for a healthy longevity moving forward. Our impact, right now, we're about 860 survey responses, which is phenomenal. I've noticed in the past, Eagle Pass lacks the community engagement where we have to go out of our way to really get individuals to provide their insight, and so this survey allows for us to anonymously hear the needs and concerns of our community and analyzes data to go ahead and, again, implement data-driven decisions. Again, a key point, 30% of our individuals are without healthcare coverage. This is something that we need to really tackle on to provide the opportunity for equal care all around Eagle Pass. On a good note, 44% of our survey respondents want to participate in future community initiatives. So what this lets us know is that, you know, the community wants to get involved. They want to get better. They want better. It's a matter of argument to provide them the resources to achieve a better life. And unfortunately, 40% of our respondents seek medical treatment out of town, where that's, again, traveling to our sister city, Perez Negras, or traveling to San Antonio, which can be costly, and it sure was costly for my mom and myself, but we managed to overcome, and that's not something that everybody is fortunate to do. So again, if there's any way we can reduce the rates at which individuals are seeking healthcare treatment out of town and investing their money out of town when that money can be reinvested in our community and provide for better economic development in Eagle Pass moving forward. Lastly, we have a quickly, a quick three-step phase where our initial phase will be to invest in community health education and outreach programs to raise awareness and promote healthcare lifestyles. With the few community health events that we've had in over the kind of the last six to eight weeks, we've gotten great participation in our events, and that's despite it being hot and despite the heat, you know, individuals are wanting to go out there and put themselves out there to be more aware and educated on their health. Secondly, we'll collaborate with local healthcare providers to offer reduced healthcare services for uninsured individuals, and lastly, we will allocate funding for establishing collaborative partnerships with local organizations and stakeholders to implement holistic interventions. To measure the impact, again, we want to really increase the access of medical services that are being provided to our community, and that just comes with great collaboration and partnering with existing assets in Eagle Pass. Secondly, reduce the need for emergency visits and hospitalization. As Dr. Thomas stated, there are individuals who are seeking medical treatment at the Fort Duncan Regional Medical Center, who can have that treatment done elsewhere, but they aren't necessarily aware of the resources that are provided, and all this does is just cause for more congestion in our hospital, and it doesn't allow for individuals who need that care to receive it because they're being focused on other individuals. And lastly, just continue with the collection of data and provide, you know, accurate information to provide to state and local governments to provide greater research for Eagle Pass. If we can actively provide, you know, accurate information and data, they really don't have an idea of what it is we're facing in Eagle Pass. And that pretty much wraps it up. Y'all do have a presentation folder available with y'all. We can go ahead and quickly review that as well.
So, and before we conclude, I did see Maverick County Judge Ramzi Kuntur. We've been having meetings and discussing the extensity of the project and the importance of sharing government responsibility on this. If you could just share with us just a little bit about your thoughts on sharing governmental responsibility on such a big project like this.
Well, first, good afternoon, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the Council. It's an honor to be back here. Always great memories being here at the dais, but more than anything, just coming together here as the judge for Maverick County and the efforts that are ongoing for community partnerships amongst our entities of government. This is something that obviously hasn't been seen pretty much ever. This is an opportunity for us to take this health concern and this effort to another level, a level of ultimate opportunity for our residents to work hand-in-hand and to make sure that the necessary opportunities for proper information for healthcare opportunities with this Public Health Department are met. Maverick County supports this effort in working together in conjunction with the city and the hospital district. I believe that it's been a long time coming to bring entities together to work towards a common goal, and I think that while we look towards the future of this community, the growth of where we're seeing and the number and the support that is out there, to see us move cohesively together in these matters, I think, is what is most important. So I just wanted to come up forth and to express our support as an individual, one, as the judge for our county, and the efforts that we have set forth as a mission and as an agenda as an entity, which has come forth as the city to tackle the concerns of healthcare in our community. We all know that there's always been that concern for many years. So with that, I just wanted to personally come forth before this body and to express our support for working together, for formulating this interlocal agreement, and for moving forward in a progressive manner for the citizens of this community and for its healthcare. So with that, thank you all.
Thank you, Judge. I was looking at the presentation, and I saw that one of the appendix, it says "Public Health Budget," and it has some numbers, and it has an amount for director, care coordinator, and basically the total amount here in this booklet is $198,088. Under this agreement, who would be responsible for?
So, we wanted to be-
Just the first time I see this.
Yes, yes, yes. No, and I took concerns from all of Council. I wanted to really make sure that we were being as transparent as we could, start to finish, on what this would look like, right? We have $100,000 that was committed from last fiscal year, from the City of Eagle Pass. We have $100,000 that was committed from the Maverick County Hospital District that's taken from the Tobacco Fund, directly taken from the Tobacco Fund, so it doesn't impact taxpayer dollars. We've also received $10,000 from Methodist Healthcare Ministries to support our ongoing efforts to meet across entities, to form collaboration, to basically form a coalition, which we've been, I had brought that item to Council for those initial first $10,000, which was to just basically light up the spark, right? So there's no financial impact to the city's budget moving forward. I have included the Sustainability Plan that really leverages state and federal grants, the creation of a new 340B entity, the ongoing tapping in of the Tobacco Fund. I think at some point, I had also brought to Council the opportunity to participate in another class action lawsuit. And so we're being really strategic with what we're doing, with how we can attain those funds. But I really wanted to present the budget because I know that from our initial conversations, that had been something that was really important. How do we fund this, right? This sounds great, but how do we make sure that we fund this, which is a very valid concern. I do not want to embark on a journey that would put us at a financial predicament, and that's why we've made use, if you can look at the whole front row full of interns that we have, we've made partnerships with Baylor University, UT, Southwest Texas University, and we're bringing that talent back. I'm really proud of our interns for really highly, I actually want to take this time to present all of them. Sebastian, he's joining, Sebastian Garcia, he's joining us from UT. He participated in the Home to Texas program last year, and we were able to get him back as a data analyst. And if you really see through a lot of the data that's been collected, a lot of it has been designed by Sebastian, curated by Sebastian, and really taken a really, a leadership approach to the way that we've developed this. Ms. Lily Moncada, she's our public healthcare coordinator. She's done a lot of the legwork to make sure that we compile the list of all the medical resources in town, making sure that we're linking people to where they need to go. Ms. Barbara Cardoza, she's also, she just completed her freshman year at UT, also through the Home to Texas program. And then we have Adam and Aaron Crone, who are, they're the sons of Dr. Crone, our medical director at the hospital district. We have Diego Herrera, who's still exploring his career in the healthcare industry, and so he's leveraged this opportunity to kind of get his feet wet with a lot of the initiatives that we have going on. And then we also have Diego D'Avila. All of the Baylor interns have a strong interest in furthering their- All of the, the Baylor interns have a strong interest in, in furthering their medical careers. So they are planning on going to medical school. And so we have a, a very varied experience. Everybody kind of brings something different to the table. And so we've been able to do a lot of this legwork for a really long time, using little to no, to no resources.
I quickly want to touch base on-
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I just really want to touch base on a few of the graphs that I have provided for y'all. Unfortunately, I have not made copies for our audience. But if y'all, if y'all can open up to page eight quickly, it will be a graph.
What's the title of the graph? Is the pages numbered?
The, the, the page is at the bottom right corner, but the question states identify the three unhealthiest behaviors in our community.
I was reading through it as you were presenting, sorry.
I apologize about that. Again, the question is to say identify the three unhealthiest behaviors in our community. So with this graph, we, this is strictly based off the surveys that were, eight hundred and sixty responses. And as y'all can see, there is a huge call on the need for addressing the poor eating habits in Eagle Pass. Followed by substance abuse and the lack of physical activity. If you look at these three large components that make up the chart, a lot of these fall under the need of a public health department. And the interventions that our public health department would address. Beginning with the education on nutrition, you know, in Eagle Pass, we're thinking about the food environment. And kind of the, the availability of nutritious foods in Eagle Pass. With our two main grocery stores, HEB and Walmart. Outside of these two grocery markets, there's nowhere really accessible for our individuals to receive nutritious foods. Heavy relying on Main Street restaurants and fast food to take, which is not what we ideally wanted to focus and have our community eat moving forward. Especially if our main goal is to make a healthier Eagle Pass. So just addressing these three topics, again, substance abuse. Substance abuse is something that, that is unfortunately seen a lot in Eagle Pass and something that begins at a young age. A lot of it deals with our culture, but if there's a, eventually we will have to reach a point where we break that generational behavior. Where individuals are, you know, beginning and, beginning and, you know, starting this substance journey at a young age. Highlighting the, the importance of, you know, limiting that and especially in the school systems. As a, for a recent graduate at the Eagle Pass High School. You know, vapes and tobacco was something that's something super common nowadays. So addressing those to our younger community and also bringing it up top to our parents, allowing the parents to be educated on, you know, the, the bad side and the, 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 the toll it has on our health, especially from a young age. The next question, identify the three most important health issues in our community. Our leading issue is diabetes. At least that's what our community feels is, is an issue that is super prevalent with a, about twenty-seven percent dealing with that. Followed by obesity and cancer. Again, these are issues that would be taken, taken into consideration in our health education initiatives. And just promoting and making individuals aware of, of the long-term benefits and how it affects them with this. With that, I leave y'all with the remainder of any questions y'all have.
I just want to say that we heard from Dr. Thomas, Ms. Robinson also. And I agree that medical, the health services are much needed in the community. I mean, we could use more mental health providers, all kinds of doctors, very, very underserved. So I definitely agree with that and diabetes, all the, the health issues.
I, I glad, y'all flipped the page.
I do have some questions-
Go ahead.
Regarding the actual agreements, right? Cause I want to know exactly, what are the duties under, like, like I said, I agree, we need all this. But what are the, what will be the duties and responsibilities of Maverick County Hospital District? Of the city of Eagle Pass and of, of the county? What exactly, I get the purpose, but in looking and studying the actual agreement? And maybe Exhibit A, do we have it?
So we, we should, do we have it in our package? I, I think that, that interlocal agreement got sent to everybody. We wanted to make it clear that when we started this project, it was a conversation that I had had with, back then with, it started with George Antuna. And it was about taking responsibility as govern, as, without having a, a local health department. It's very easy for city government to say, this, this is not, this is not us, right? We don't belong here, right? But the, the fact of it is that most counties or cities, or combination of counties or cities, have health departments. Most established cities. So when we first started this, I realized that the city of Eagle Pass had the, the most funds, right? When it came to the three entities. I, I sat and I had a conversation with, with, with Judge Ramsay Cantu and they offered real property, right? They offered an in-kind contribution of, of real property. And Maverick County Hospital District had the medical expertise to start the organizational structure to create a health department. So I, if, if you turn the page on, right there, just turn the page on solutions, right? The core objectives of, of the public health department are to establish an organizational structure. So right now, we have a team of interns. We need a public health director. We have somebody that's directing people to services as they come in, but we haven't really launched our, our public health coordinated efforts. There's no department. And, and that's some, some of the things that, that we were noticing, that the city of Eagle Pass is already doing public health functions. Our, our mayor's fitness council, council that was established when Judge Cantu was still here. That was, that was a public health initiative. We have initiatives through parks that are public health initiatives. We have our sanitation services that are, that are conducted by planning and zoning. And all of that is public health. But it wasn't categorized under the organization, organizational structure of public health. It's not concentrated effort. And so what I'm asking is to bring the three entities together and to really bring their resources. In this case, the city will commit the money, the, the county will commit the space. And the hospital district will commit the manpower and the, the money to be able to form the organizational structure. Number two would be to conduct a community needs assessment, which our goal was one thousand responses. And every time that Sebastian gets close to that goal, I kind of switch it on him. So we, we might go for like fifteen hundred or two thousand, but we've had a great community response, right? So objective number two has almost been met. Number three is launching public health education initiatives. Once we gather the data and we, we determine, okay, people need to know more about diabetes. Or they need to increase their awareness on what primary care providers we have in town. Or what, like if people are prioritizing unhealthy behaviors, for example, as, such as vaping. Depending on what the data says that's relevant to our community, because that's the main part that we were missing. We didn't know what we were, we, I, I mean, I hear complaints about the hospital. I hear sometimes complaints about our own system or competing healthcare system. We hear that people are unsatisfied, but, but we don't have any data that says this is where we need to concentrate our efforts. I can tell you that we need more primary care providers. I can tell you that we need more specialists and I can tell you exactly which specialists we're missing. But depending on what the community says we need the most, that's where the concentrated effort needs to, needs to be. So that would be the, the, the concentrated efforts of the hospital district. Reducing the need for emergency room visits, that's something that, that's more of a long-term vision. And collecting the data to advocate to state and federal agencies for improved healthcare. So for this part of the agreement, all the agreement states is that the, the city is going to give the money.
I, I thought you said that, that from now on, the city wasn't going to give the money.
Yeah, yeah, so it, it just commits the money from, from last year. We've, we've taken this kind of in chunks, right? So the, the hospital district commits the money, that is kind of like a relatively new thing, right? But to execute the functions, the hospital district is committing the money. The city already committed the money and we are not asking for money moving forward. I think that, that's legal, that is clear in the interlocal agreement, correct?
Based on the last tradition, yes.
Yeah. So that was important to me as well, to make sure that the, the, the interlocal agreement stated that we were not committing any more money to this on the city side. And that the hospital district will commit to the, the manpower, the organizational infrastructure.
And, and me as the mayor, and thank you for the presentations, I mean, I think we're more than clear that we have a lot of needs and, and they must be done. Health department, I mean, completely in favor. My dad used to be a doctor and of course, I mean, I'm, I'm always in favor of, of improvements in the medical field. But my, I guess my question, I mean, I love the fact that we are very clear in, in one thing, which is the, the health of our community and that they need more. I mean, all these investigations, all these surveys, all this, that we're finally putting, and not me. I mean, all of you are finally putting a little bit more of attention to, to the community needs. And what is it that exactly we lack in Eagle Pass? I think it's great. I think it's, it's, it's a big step moving forward. I guess my, my question, main question is why does MCHD need a joint partnership as opposed to the city doing it individually? I mean, why, what is it out there for you compared to just having it by the city? And then having all the members, professional medical members, I mean, of all of the community involved? And, and having, I guess, a joint committee or board that really cares? Because I mean, I have spoken with different people that are in the medical fields and they're all, I mean, in favor of a health department. But I guess my concern mainly, and I'm going to be very honest, it's that, I mean, we all change. I mean, we might not be here in the future. Your board will change or, you know, the people involved maybe will lose interest later on. Or maybe they have something against a specific entity and, you know, I mean, there's a lot of other things and matters that concern me to be fair to everyone in the medical field. I think we're more than clear also that we need the support of every medical professional there is here that really care. And, and I guess what I'm trying to get to is, we all care for the health department. We all have the best interest of having a health department. There's a lot of questions still, I guess, in the air on how it will work. And who's going to be responsible for what exactly? Because I know that if it's on the physician's side. I mean, I know that in Laredo, they have, in the health department, they don't necessarily have physicians. I mean, they have other people involved that take care of different things. But I, I think that to be more fair, I mean, there's other questioning around it. But I mean, I mean, again, the health department, it's a must, it's a goal. I think you all have worked so diligently on, on everything and in every detail. And at least we, we're getting to this point after so much efforts. I just think that my concern is to be fair and having, I guess, a member of, like I said in the, in the other meeting. Having a member of the community to have their, their way of thinking. Have different entities involved as well. Having maybe a individual doctor that has, not necessarily like a private sector. I mean, just a little bit of everything so that we can get more out of it. But I mean, that's my personal opinion, maybe, I mean, there's much more to question. But definitely, I mean, a health department, of course, of course. And all this information, I guess, it's, it's answering a lot of questions, but I still have a couple. And yes, very concerned of an MOU with exclusively one entity only. That's the only concern that I have, but no doubt on the health department.
So I do, I do want to comment on the fact, on, on MOU specifically, right? So what we're looking at is an inter-local agreement between governmental entities. And I think that was, that was expressed very clearly during our last meeting. I, I, I think that the, the sharing of governmental responsibilities, public health. It, it's, it's public, it's not, it's not private, right? And so the privatization, I, I, this public health department will include a partnership with as many and all medical providers that want to give voice to it, that want to give advocacy for it. That want to help us share community needs assessments. But there is a, a concerning factor when we ask private entities to get in governmental business. Particularly when it comes to healthcare, there's a concern. There's a concern that private entities, they're in healthcare for profit. They're not in healthcare for public good. And so there's a difference between healthcare delivery and public health. What we're advocating here for is public health. And what we're advocating for is for the governments to share in the responsibility of taking care of the healthcare of the citizens.
That's our main, I mean, that's our main point. But my concern also is that in one of the meetings that also were, you know, was part of the MCHD. It was also mentioned that it was also the, the commitment to the, to the hospital itself. You know, that not only the community, but also, you know, the involvement of the, the, the hospital itself, this. So I guess my concern again is to be fair to everyone. I mean, if we have our heart on this truly, I see no problem having a health department share with all the professionals in the field and have, I guess I just need to-
What would that sharing look like?
Let's say, okay, and, and questions like code enforcement regarding the food establishments. Who's going to take care of that? Our city only or the, the health department will take care of it? Because as far as I heard, it's not your problem or your-
Our jurisdiction, the city will continue to do functions according to the city. And, and I think maybe we can express that a little bit more clearly.
Sorry, and I think councilman, that's one of the issues, that this is not in the MOU.
Yes. And I, I don't want something great or good to end up really bad.
And I was going to ask our, our attorney, in, in your latest draft, it says, MCHD agrees to perform- It's a pay, well, I want to know-
Which is the latest draft? Let's, let's start there.
Yes.
July tenth, and then you all got emails.
Okay, in the July tenth, page two of seven.
Is that latest draft? Yes, and we had highlighted- That's what's on, that's what's on the agenda, right? Of the last changes that were made.
On page two of seven, if I may please, it says, MCHD agrees to perform the services described on Exhibit A.
And we don't have an Exhibit A.
Then we go to Exhibit A and there's nothing there.
It's blank and we never received one.
But we had the same interns and visiting with Mr. Diaz with respective changes. We noted that, that we were missing the attachment and I was going to provide it at a later time in detail and what those issues were.
That, that, that's, that is, I, I like the idea, that is the only issue I have is that. So what is that?
I think something to keep in mind and, and since we're, we're going into uncharted territory and trying to get these governmental entities, including the hospital district, to develop a public health department and visiting with the state officials. We were informed that, you know, this is new territory, no one's actually done this with city, county and the hospital district.
But- No other city has done this?
Not that they could find, and so that's why we, it took us a little bit longer to, to, to work on this. But there are certain conditions, like Ms. Cruz has pointed out, that if there's an infraction. You know, a private for-profit business would more than likely not have the ability to have its employees go and issue a citation, because they don't meet the requirements, right? And we need to have like code enforcement officers or the right requisite training and the right certifications within the public health department for those officials to be the ones that issue notices or issue citations. So then they can just testify here in court if the issue then, you know, involves litigation. And so I think to kill, that's the concern that Ms. Mr. Diaz has is like, how do we get, how are we going to get private businesses when they really can't go down that road? What, a, a good way that I think that we can address Mrs. Cruz's concern is to separately do like an ordinance setting up the public health department board, where we can provide, just like she has mentioned. You know, maybe five seats or seven seats, however you all feel comfortable. But in there you can have like a doctor or somebody from the private enterprise serve so that they can make, give recommendations to the council on how they would like to move forward with this public health department initiative. And remember, this is only commits you to the funds that are currently available, as Mr. Diaz pointed out. And so all it requires under the term is anybody to give thirty days- under the term is anybody to give 30 days' notice and, or when the funds are expended. And so there's no future commitment to have to, next year, Mayor, as your concern is, another hundred thousand from, if you don't feel it's working, you, any entity can just provide 30 days' notice.
My concern is more the exact functions of each entity.
Yeah. And so we can spell those out. We can definitely include them more detailed in those contexts and based on this presentation. And then see what will be, going over to the city where they retain control and they have the right certifications to issue citations, and then what will be, continue to be maintained by this public health department set up by these three governmental entities.
So one of the things that we are missing here, and I think it speaks to the authority that Ms. Cruz is concerned about, is we are missing local health authority. We had Dr. Valles in the past, right? And that is something that was strictly run specifically by the city. It actually has to be run by the city in talks with Dr. Ringstorf from the public health department, the Texas Public Health Department. And so that does require some infrastructure development from the team, right? Like, we're going to have to go find the funding. Hiring a doctor is not easy. And part of what you were saying is, you know, why don't we, basically, why don't we start a healthcare system on the city's end? Well, that's going to take a lot of, a lot of time, a lot of infrastructure development. The city doesn't have the expertise to develop that. And so what we're presenting now would be not just diluted, but basically delayed to the point where it would become ineffective. And while politics affect healthcare, and politics are important to healthcare, I think it's important for us to recognize our role, how we develop the policies that affect the healthcare of our citizens. Because the people that are sick now, they're going to continue, they can't wait, there's people in this community that cannot wait for us to establish a public health department. There's people that are dying, just a couple of weeks ago, we received notice that the emergency rooms were full. Every single day, our community members are trying to reach out to local doctors and they can't get an appointment. Every single day, people are having to travel for cancer treatment. And so it's, it's great and nice and beautiful to think of maybe, I would love, I actually reached out to Yvonne and I said, do you think council would want to go on a field trip? Let's go to Laredo and look at their health department. They have an amazing health department. We're a long way from that, and we can't even start because we are...
That's the thing, it belongs to the city only, and they have a board of members. That's why I'm trying just to understand about just the commitment with one entity, which is, I mean, that's the thing that concerns me the most.
And I do...
You want to close one of the private, I mean, you don't want the private sector to be involved, but you can close their kitchen or the hospital, or you can, I mean, you have control...
But I do want to talk about that, because Maverick County Hospital District is as much my entity as the County of Maverick is your entity, correct? So there is opportunity for collaboration across entities here. We, we just approved an item on the agenda that, with one of our entities, right, with the school district. It happens. We, we work for public good, in positions of public good, and sometimes there's overlap in that.
I recall when you first approached us on this, that the hospital district was going to bring to the table the ability to go out for grants and funding that otherwise would not be available to the city or the county because of the hospital district angle.
And not just grants, the, we just received a Texas infertility project prevention grant. That's a grant, right? And that qualifies us for 340B reimbursement. That's a federal rebate on every single pharmaceutical that is, that is related to this program. And that's, that's just one aspect, right? Because public health is a big, big animal. So when we're looking at sexual health, that's, that's one way that we can get funding. We're receiving funding from the Texas Tobacco Fund that really taps into the adverse effects of things like, like tobacco that have affected our community. And we're now receiving incentives from that. It's, it's not just grants. It's really the strategic management of resources. When you look at every single intern that's here right now, that is a product of a relationship that has been built. And, you know, we, when we had originally discussed this, you said a hundred thousand dollars in in-kind contribution of manpower. No, it's a hundred thousand dollars of tobacco money. That does not include the labor of every single one of these individuals that has set up everything that has been needed to even get us to the point where we can start talking about a public health department.
Mayor Potem, Councilon Garcia.
Mayor, so you can always direct the administration and legal to move forward, let's say, if you do want like a board overseeing it, to develop an ordinance that would also address the concerns and put the right people in place so that they can have oversight and then make recommendations to the council. Close it down maybe next year, or, yeah, expand it.
I don't, we, personally, I want a public health authority, but I want it, right now, I'm still confused, Counselor, to be honest, as far as the duties I go back. I don't want to sound redundant like a broken record.
Let me, let me interject, I guess.
I'm sorry?
No, go ahead and finish, and then I'll interject.
See the attorney in me that I need to know exactly.
Right.
We can send this back, and we can, we can definitely beef up.
I think that's sort of, I mean, that's why I was just sort of listening a little bit, taking back. First of all, thank you for your presentation and for all of your work. It doesn't go unnoticed. The need for more outreach, more education in regards to public health, Elias, I can't thank you enough for championing this. Because public health is, is very important, and it's very important to all of us. But to sit up here on the dais, we have to sort of take a little bit of a step back. And I think what, we're trying to give marching orders a little bit to administration and legal, I think we just need to delineate a little bit about specifics. And I think that's where some of us are having a little bit of hiccups. I know we had a very lengthy conversation, and I know, I'm always going to be the finance person, and I always ask, okay, I'm going to know, I think I got Jesse's back too often here, but it's like, I want to make sure that, I know we had already approved the one hundred thousand dollars to, to go forward, but I don't want to, and this is me speaking, I want to make sure that this succeeds. I want to make sure that, okay, what happens after year two? What happens in year three? What are our options from the city? Because we need to make sure that we're doing what's in the best interest of the city fiduciarily with our taxpayer funds. That's the same thing as, you know, our counterparts at the hospital district have to do the same thing with their, the funds that they receive. And we, we see it like, I mean, and I know the judge is tackling a lot of issues, but, and you're getting there, you know, and it's, and we see it, and it's good, and it's great for us to collaborate. But I just think, you know, we want to make sure that we see everything. And it's like, I know, you keep referencing Schedule A, I mean, we need to see it. I mean, for us to be able to vote on anything, it's like, we don't want to vote on something that's completely, where we have a lot of questions, because we want to make sure that, it's like I've said this in another situation, we don't want to set anyone up to fail.
Yes.
I want to make sure this succeeds because I think y'all put a lot of work into this. And like I said, it doesn't go unnoticed. I mean, this is one hell of a presentation. Y'all have done, you've done your work, you've done your diligence, but now it has to come back to us, and we need to make sure we do ours. And I think that's sort of where we are. I think if we can spend a little time to make sure that we get all these points ironed out, I think that's where everyone is at. And I really speak a little bit last year, but...
You, you mentioned the board. Would there be a way to still have an agreement between the three entities and the board to oversee everything?
Well, the board would be set up by the, you, and you have unilateral authority to set up a board to oversee and provide recommendations.
A public health authority.
Right. You don't need to go to the county or the hospital.
So here's my concern with the board, and I actually have significant data on what should and should not be included on the board. And that's been part of my ongoing frustration with this, because there's a lot of things that don't happen in Eagle Pass. Because, and Mayor and I had a conversation on this, sometimes we put so much effort into something, we put so much effort into development, and we don't 100% understand it. And sometimes what happens is, we get input from other, other areas, right? The private sector, people from the community might reach out. And depending on who reaches out, and there's significant data, I really, I'm surprised that I have to explain this part of healthcare, but I definitely will do it. There's, there's a number of different reasons why certain people might want to control aspects of public health, and why they might want to have a stake in the way that public health policies are developed. And that is dictated by profit. I, I'm not going to be shy about speaking out on that. I am not going to be shy about saying that I don't think that this public health department needs an oversight from a board of people that are made up of leaders of healthcare communities. I am 100% on board with having that board be citizens, being people that don't have access to transportation, that don't have access to healthcare resources. I'm 100% board on with that. So if that's the conversation that we want to have, I definitely think that that's important for us to have. But to put the shape of the healthcare of this community in the hands of people that will benefit from it, I don't think that's right. And I do not want to shy away from speaking out very adamantly against that.
And that's what I'm trying to avoid here in my personal opinion, that that doesn't end up being the case with MCHD necessarily. Because right now, we might know everyone involved, and the board, and everyone that is committed, but what if everything else changes and then we have that type of...
But why does it have to be the people involved? I mean...
I, I think one of the conditions of said board, board hypothetically, could be to not appoint, like you said.
Healthcare.
You can, you can be very specific. As you know, Mayor, you can put like someone that has a noted disability, somebody from low income, let's say, that qualifies, somebody from the housing authority, something like that, that you can have input from the community. And you can also provide who will not be a board. And then the key is, I think that board should be set up, just like P and Z in many matters, and zoning board, where it just gives recommendations to the council. So you receive the recommendations, but ultimately it's you all that make the decision. So that we have that checks and balance that Mr. Diaz is concerned, where somebody making decisions and really no oversight from the board. So the recommendations, I think, are the key that are made to the city, and then ultimately then you make, you know, you're going to have, you already have the opioid, some of those funds. And I think, you know, law enforcement, fire department needs to use, the general budget has made expenditures also. I don't want to, I'm feeling the eyes of Jesse already, because he's already probably planned how to spend that money. But some of those monies can then, you know, from the board can be set a so much of a percentage needs to be used to public health.
I can't even pass the inter-local agreement, and you're talking about budget.
Because it's, because you're right. I'm going to, and I'm glad you're saying like that, because I know there was some of the issues about the hundred, and I haven't asked you about this, but I, like I asked you about the funding. Because I want to make sure that if we're going to have to plan for funding it this port out, we need to make sure that we're planned. I mean, I, like I said, I don't want to say, and then next year we're going to say, we don't have the money for, I, that's the last thing I want to do. If I'm going to pass something, I want to make sure that, you know, we can...
And I think everything happened way too fast, I guess, and that's why we got to this point, and let me be clear.
And honestly, if you are trying to access healthcare in this community, this is not fast at all. We are going on over a year of planning, development, meetings.
Yeah, but let me tell you, that's the thing. You are having the meetings and you already know what's going on. But then, let me put it this way, in our, in our side. One day, we were just talking about it. The next day, we were already, it was already like a done deal. And then the next day, we didn't have an MOU. So I mean, there's a lot of questions.
We approved the budget line item last fiscal year. I came to you with the grant opportunity for Methodist Healthcare Ministries, like about seven months ago. Then we went through the legal structure. Then we went through ordinance one, two. Are we on two or are we on three?
It passed already.
It passed.
The creation of the health department.
It passed. Like, this is a really weird time for us to go back and be like, oh, I didn't, I didn't know about it.
One thing is that, and another very different thing, it's a health department with the city involved and the county involved, with an MOU with no, no, no specifics. So how am I going to sign something? And I'm just going, because then the citizens might be very, right now, they're very thrilled about it. But, and then later on, they might come back to us and say, why did you sign something that it's taking more of our money for something that it's not as clear, and how come you didn't review it? So that's why, I mean...
I'm 100% on board with taking a pause, going back and outlining the responsibilities of each entity. But what I felt, starting last, because this, this had been no secret, that this was an inter-local agreement between three entities. So what I was concerned with is, oh, you have to go back to step one. You have to start again. And not that we had to, right? But that was the discussion. And so it was frustrating on my end to think, okay, let's start again. Let's include private entities. Let's, let's create a different type of legal structure. Let me go back to Dr. Ringstorf at this date and see if this is even legally allowed. I mean, there was so many things that happened in the development of this. I'm 100% on board with saying, we're not going to pass the inter-local agreement yet. We have buy-in from the city, and I do think it's important that we have buy-in from all of us. You are in planning and zoning. You're an attorney. I'm a healthcare professional. You're in food services. You are in education. We are like a dream team to develop a very efficient healthcare department. I don't want to create something that each and every single one of you is not 100% on board with. But there's, there's lines...
And again, we support you 100% in the health department. It's just everything that involves that signing an MOU that we just barely saw last week.
If we're okay with moving...
We were here to approve without seeing it, that's, you know...
If we're okay with moving forward on just, you know, like, we'll figure out the inter-local agreement, we can bring that back to council with, and we will hammer that out. I have no, I mean, the work is still being done. I have no problem saying, okay, we won't, we won't sign it, or we won't sign it yet. I want to make sure that everybody's comfortable. What I felt was, this was, because what we're saying is, we support public health, but our actions are delaying the process, right? So what I was concerned with is, this is not going to happen. So if, if we have the buy-in from council and we can move forward with just hammering out the inter-local agreement, and I think that...
I think you have the buy-in, just the structure.
Just the structure.
And on the specifics, we'll get it done.
If you're wanting the board or not, is what you're trying to say?
Yes.
And I'm going to be very honest.
A board, a board of private citizens.
Yeah, and I guess I got, I mean, the way things happened, I'm going to be very, very honest and with all the respect, because you know that we all, you know, we're very supportive of one another. But sometimes I just started hearing like you were acting more of a MCHD representative and not as a councilman. So that's what I'm trying to be fair. No, 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 I'm just trying to be, I'm going to be, I mean, I'm just saying so that he understands where I'm coming from. It got to a point that it was kind of uncomfortable because we all have the best interest and heart. And that's when I was trying to get to that point where I said, okay, we all want the health department. Why is it happening? Yeah, we want to move forward. And if we need a governmental entity, we have the county and the city, let's do it. And, and support us the same way that you're supporting us right now. But let's be fair and have citizens on that board, as you just mentioned, along with other, because there's a lot of questioning. I'm not doubting any of those, I mean, I think it's great and everything that is being done. I'm just trying to get to the point where we don't get into a conflict of that, you know, matter. I'm trying to just have a fair agreement.
I think we've heard valid, valid concerns, valid questions.
It's timely.
So it's time for somebody to make a motion as to how they want to proceed.
I want to make a motion to not approve the inter-local agreement and keep it under city management. Be us that direct it. Be us to see the growth. If we can't keep ourselves or our own programs, how are we wanting to grow more if we can't keep our food establishment and everything under control? How do you want to give more duties? With all due respect, Elias, and I know you're good at what you do, but we cannot grow or we cannot bite more than we can chew. So with that being said, I think we should first control our house, then grow out some more. So I'm not saying table, I say we just not agree at this time until we're ready. And ready, I mean, the city.
Okay, we have, we have a motion.
Will it be city and county, or just city?
At this time, if we can see the city and then we can start speaking with the county, it'd be good. But at this time, the city start working itself to grow into the county if the county agrees to. Because it'd be good, but also we have to look... Because it'd be good, but also we have to look at our limits as to how much we can further with the county or how much they will allow us to.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I can, I have a question. I, is there, I mean, I respect y'all's motions. Is there any way we could reconsider maybe tabling so we can hammer out some of these features? I don't want to throw something that's been worked on. Just, I, I, I agree or disagree with what you're saying, but we have other options on the table. I mean, a lot of work has been done with this. Maybe we can see what some of the details are maybe that are giving us a little bit of a hiccup, if you want to call it that, before we just sort of...
So, Ed, we just heard the idea...
Some of the stuff, I mean, cause I know, you know, he said, how we can have some of this stuff, I mean, maybe Leo can try to draft some ideas and Liz, maybe you can spend some time with him to make sure that we can get some of this clarity and I don't, you know, maybe we can just hammer it out that way. That's just another suggestion.
And, and that's my concern, that I can spend a number of hours, I, I've slept very little within the past week and, and I do want to clarify with you, Councilwoman Cruz, that I'm not an advocate for MCHD, I'm an advocate for public health. And I know that it's difficult for people that do not think with public good in mind. I, I know that it's difficult to conceptualize the idea, why would somebody do this if there's no gain? That's my situation. And so my concern is, yes, we are going to attribute this to the city, we're gonna say, okay, um, let's, let, have the city take care of it, the city doesn't have capacity, it's gonna take us over a year to build capacity, the county doesn't have capacity. That, that's the beauty of a partnership. And so no matter how much I argue on behalf of whatever, the, the concerns that are on the table right now, they're completely different than what we were, we were discussing at, at the last session. And so the next time that I come up with a list of concerns, valid concerns that have been addressed, then we're gonna have other concerns because there's no interest in developing a, 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 a department that is for the good of the community. Uh, now, I know that there's been concerns about...
But we're not discussing that, I mean, we all agree that we are in the best interest of the community.
But if we're not, if we're, if we're not developing, I mean, because, yeah, it's great, we can have a motion on the table that the city's going to develop it, can I see your plan? Can I see your plan?
But you're gonna be on the board.
A plan wasn't given to us and I requested it two weeks ago to get an ex, that exhibit A given to us.
So, that, that's not what I'm saying. To develop the infrastructure of this city, basically what, what you're saying right now is, let's let it go until the city can, can come up.
So you're saying, I mean, you're in the city, so you're saying that if we agreed to a health department under the city and the county or just the city or just the county, you're not, you're not gonna be a board because we didn't sign an MOU with the MCHD?
No, that's not what I'm saying at all.
So we're all in the best interest, we all want a health department. We just want to understand why an agreement...
The city doesn't have staff or capacity for that.
Look...
I can't be here all day.
What, I, I think we can make it work and there's been options about a board, having an independent board, right? I think an independent, somebody with no interests, right? That, that can advise council and council will have the final say. Maybe we could do that on every decision.
I like that idea. I like that idea.
Council will, not, not, city council will have final say.
I won't have a green, you know, in other matters.
And we could do a, a board of independent people in the community. Mayor Pro Tem Davis made a suggestion also about possibly ta, uh, tabling, but at this time, we've discussed, unless...
Well, I mean, there's, there's a motion.
There's a motion and a second we want to discuss.
It's up to them if they want to rescind it or not, or just, we don't have to next to take, we'll just take no action and then just maybe just ask for it to be brought back at the next, hopefully we can get that as soon as possible because it's true, I mean, they've already invested a lot of time into it. I mean, we don't want to delay something and start from zero, but, I mean, we just need to do what, I, I, I'm comfortable with. I mean, you know, we all, we all have our independent thoughts and we have to respect that and let's see how we can try to work together to try to do what's in the best interest for our community.
So we have a, a motion and a second, let's take a vote. All in favor of Councilman Garcia's motion? Okay, we have two people i- in favor, a- against that motion. We have three against, so that motion doesn't pass at this time. Does anyone else want to make a motion?
So I would like to make a motion to, um, direct legal counsel to spell out the duties of each governmental entity and their roles, their responsibilities, uh, their time, financial commitment, as well as the authorization of the, the legal structure of the, of the health department and what those powers would entail and which, with which entity they would reside. Uh, and then I would like to bring that back to council for a vote.
Who's gonna prepare?
In, in regards to, to a, a board, the possibility of...
I, I would like to also create a, a, a board that is directed by community citizens that inform the public health decisions.
Okay, we have a, a motion?
Just a little bit more, do we just need five seats? Do we want five seats on the board? So that each one of you points?
Five seats. I mean, it's your motion, but...
Yeah, yeah, five seats.
That's the motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
So just to understand.
Discussion.
So it's about, continue, that's the thing, the item, still gonna read that we're still working on an MOU specifically with MCHD only. We're just...
Well, the county's listed as...
The county.
Yeah, I mean, no, no, and the county, but I mean, we're still...
We, we, I, the motion is to see what specifically everyone is doing. Right now it's not a motion and it's gonna pass, we still have to see, wait, we're just bringing it back, so we're bringing it back.
We're bringing you drafts.
You're bringing back the, the draft?
Of the exhibit A.
Of the, of the existing local agreement, interlocal agreement.
With, with way more detail, I, I hope.
And exhibit A.
Yes, and a, a structure of a board.
Which is separated, will be in the form of an ordinance.
Yes.
That's the way I'm doing it.
Okay, further discussion?
No, I would, I mean, I know, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on the spot, but can you include him, this young man in some of this?
Yes.
He's put a lot of time into it, you know what I mean? We need to respect some of his commitment.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your consideration.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, well, there we go.
Took us a while.
Sixteen, consideration and possible ratification at, before, I, I reiterate that, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sebastian. And thank you, public health team.
Yes.
Yes.
The whole team.
Sixteen, consideration and possible ratification of a multi-year agreement contract with Brightly SmartGov licensing and permitting software. Mr. Placido.
Let me just get my slides up just a second. Looks like they were closed, give me just a minute, I'll log in and open them back up. All right, so this item, we are discussing the software that the planning, building department that we use for processing primarily permits, but we also use for general contractor registration as well as business licensing. And typically a lot of these softwares include code enforcement management as well. I guess for the most part, a lot of cities, it's all under one roof or one general oversight, so that's typically included at no additional cost. The department has utilized a platform called iWork since 2018, so roughly about five years we've been using this software and I think we've pretty much outgrown it. There's a little bit more out there for us to become a little more streamlined and especially more user friendly to where the community can obtain their permits and do their various requested projects without having to go drive out there to us at the ICT, without having to go out there to make payments, things like that, a lot more, um, modern. And so we, we did pretty thorough research of this, we looked at quite a few options and then we did some product demonstration meetings. Usually they're at least about an hour or so each, um, with four of these, OpenGov, SmartGov, Asella, GovPilot, um, you know, with really thorough ones that we saw a lot of promise with. And so the first thing I want to start with is I, I put our staff kind of in a really important leadership role of, of reviewing these because they're the ones that are in this software, using it almost all day, every day. So top ranked, and this is based strictly on the product, not looking at costs or anything else, but just on the features and functionality and, and one of the big things is the user friendliness. Our staff gave a slight edge to OpenGov. Here's an example of one city that's using OpenGov, city of Bedford, and how they're integrated their online portal into their, their website. You see a fairly, seems like easy to use, understandable, um, layout there. And our second ranked, um, by our staff, it's called SmartGov owned by a Brightly, um, solutions company. And here is a universal city that uses that SmartGov platform, also a really nice, um, website layout and their link right in the middle to use their, their portal link. I will point out quickly because I have brought up to administration and finance about development services as the, the way that this particular city, um, calls themselves. Basically what we do is planning, my official department and my title as planning director. A lot of cities use development services or sometimes community development and I think those are a little bit more reflective of, of the work we do. Sometimes we talk about planning and people wonder what, what kind of planning are we talking about, so I just wanted to point that out quickly. Now the big thing, um, the dollars and the cents, and, and this is where I was pretty surprised at the drastic differences of, um, the options here. And so they're listed in terms of pricing, lowest to highest here. SmartGov and they, well, let me start off, they all come with, with an implementation cost. That's a one-time thing to migrate our data, set us up, get our reports going, format it the way we want it. So that's a one-time cost to set us up. And as you can see, SmartGov and OpenGov have a fairly similar around forty thousand dollar one-time implementation cost. Asella is, um, I believe they're just maybe for a bigger, bigger audience than, than what, what we are, where we are today, but they have a much larger, two hundred seventy five thousand dollar one-time implementation. And then when we get into the actual annual fee or annual licensing, um, there's still a fairly significant difference between the options. SmartGov coming in at just under twenty-two thousand for year one, then it goes to about twenty-five and gradually moves up to twenty-seven thousand in year five. And even for comparing them to the next option in terms of pricing, you see, um, thirteen, fourteen thousand dollar difference in year one, twenty thousand dollar difference in year two, and then three, four and five, it's almost double the, the annual cost for the service. And again, with Asella, even much higher than that. So really, we, we're really considering here between SmartGov and, and OpenGov and talking to our staff, you know, they liked a couple of features, they felt it was a little bit more user friendly with the OpenGov, but kind of marginally, that was even one of the words that, that was taken from one of our, um, building inspectors who were very involved, was a marginally prefer OpenGov, but it's fairly drastic in the pricing, so, um, you know, being good stewards of our, our tax dollars, looking at everything, um, SmartGov is the most economical and offers, they offered us some end of quarter pricing and that's what, part of why the item here before you is, is ratification. We had to, um, to lock that in before the end of last month, but with the option that council did not approve, well, that essentially is, uh, is negated. And they also offered us a bundle price, pricing. Maverick County Planning Department is another pretty important factor here with all this , had they recently signed up for SmartGov as well. And so looking at that, community members, general contractors who do work both inside and outside city limits, if we went with SmartGov, they would only need to know how to navigate and work with one, one platform. Um, so that's pretty important to consider here. And then, um, OpenGov, again, I, I mentioned those details, they're also offering us a bundle pricing discount. Our accounting software, finance uses, is owned by the, the company, OpenGov, so we got a little bit of discounted pricing there. But again, summarizing all that, our recommendation primarily based off of that check, pretty large cost difference and the fact that Maverick County Planning will be utilizing this, um, I would say the SmartGov is the best choice for the city at this time.
Placido, right now we don't have a software?
We do, it's called iWork.
Oh, yes.
I think we just kind of need a little bit more than what, than what it's offering for us. And I guess just to compare, we are paying about nineteen thousand for that one, so it's a little bit more economical.
And you'll cancel that one?
Yes, our current, um, agreement goes through October, depending on which ones we select and how long, they're usually three to sometimes six months implementation period, we may need a few months of like month-to-month carryover to transition.
This will make the planning department way more efficient, I'm assuming?
It would make us more efficient, it would help, um, the community be able to perform a lot more of their, the, um, things that they do with our department.
Request.
Online, it would maybe things, it would save them a lot of time and it would help us provide the turnaround faster for them as well.
Perfect. Say no more.
Yeah, that's something we've been asking for, for a while, something like that.
Yeah, thank you for the support and having us look at these type of things.
I'll entertain a motion on this item.
So?
We have a motion to recommend, to approve the recommendation?
Yeah, it's recommendation.
By Mayor Pro Tem Davis, a second by Councilwoman Cruz, discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll go into executive session, I'll go ahead and read the items. Seventeen, executive session pursuant to sections five-five-one, point zero-seven-one and five-five-one, point zero-seven-four of chapter five-five-one, Texas government code, consultation with attorney on personnel matters regarding pre-civil service sick leave, sick leave hours for firefighters and police officers and possible action in open session regarding same. Eighteen, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas government code, consultation with legal counsel regarding the interlocal agreement between the city of Eagle Pass and the city of Eagle Pass Waterworks System Regarding Services and Equipment and Possible Action in Open Session Regarding Same. Nineteen, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one, point zero-eight-seven, chapter five-five-one, Texas government code, presentation and deliberation regarding economic development negotiations under the revolving loan fund program with Triple R, RR Enterprises LLC and Possible Action in Open Session Regarding Same. Twenty, executive session pursuant to sections five-five-one, point zero-seven-one and five-five-one, point zero-seven-two of chapter five-five-one, Texas government code, consultation with attorney and deliberations about the purchase option for the Camino Real International Bridge Administration Building from city of Eagle Pass and Possible Action in Open Session Regarding Same. Twenty-one, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one, point zero-eight-seven, chapter five-five-one, Texas government code, presentation and discussion regarding medical workforce program two-point-O to negotiate terms for possible agreement between city of Eagle Pass and United Medical Centers to allocate medical workforce program funds for medical incentives and possible action in open session regarding same. Twenty-two, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one of chapter five-five-one, Texas government code, consultation with legal counsel regarding the Puerto Verde presidential permit request for the construction of a cross-border rail and truck freight bridge in Eagle Pass, Maverick County, Texas, possible action in... and truck freight bridge in Eagle Pass, Maverick County, Texas, possible action in open session. Twenty-three, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel regarding the Eagle Pass Touchstone Golf Contract, possible action in open session, including, but not limited to modification, renegotiation, and/or termination of existing agreement, and authorizing city manager to negotiate and execute all documents related to same. Twenty-four, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel regarding the request by Texas State University System for the City of Eagle Pass to participate in the infrastructure costs related to the donation of land for the first standalone building in Eagle Pass and the creation of a four-year university, and possible action in open session regarding same. We'll go into executive session at seven forty-one PM. Okay, we are coming back from executive session at nine thirty PM. We will start with seventeen, executive session pursuant to sections five-five-one, point zero-seven-one, and five-five-one, point zero-seven-four of chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney on personnel matters regarding pre-civil service sick leave hours for firefighters and police officers, and possible action in open session regarding same. I'll entertain a motion regarding this item. This was discussed-
There's no action on this.
That's right, we discussed it in executive session, there's no action on item seventeen.
There are instructions to administration that provides additional figures for you.
Yes. Eighteen, executive session, session pursuant to section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel regarding the interlocal agreement between the City of Eagle Pass and the City of Eagle Pass Waterworks System regarding services and equipment, and possible action in open session regarding same.
I would like to make a motion to instruct, uh, city manager to get additional information regarding this matter.
Let's discuss it.
I'll discuss in executive session.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Cruz. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Garcia, discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Nineteen, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one, point zero-eight-seven, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, presentation and deliberation regarding economic development negotiations under the revolving loan fund program with Triple R, R Enterprises LLC, and possible action in open session regarding same.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a, a motion to approve by Councilman Diaz, and a second by Councilwoman Cruz, discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Twenty, executive session pursuant to sections five-five-one, point zero-seven-one, and chapter five-five-one, point zero-seven-two of chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with attorney and deliberations about the purchase option for the Camino Real International Bridge Administration Building from the City of Eagle Pass, and up, and, and possible action in open session regarding same.
I would like to make a motion to allow city manager to negotiate and discuss in executive session.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Cruz. Do we have a second? Second by Mayor Protem Davis, discussion, all in favor? It is unanimous. Twenty-one, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one, point zero-eight-seven, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, presentation and discussion regarding medical workforce program two-point-O, two-point-O, to negotiate terms for possible agreement between City of Eagle Pass and United Medical Centers, to allocate medical workforce program funds for medical incentives, and possible action in open session regarding same.
I would like to make a motion to table this item pending further information regarding the specifics of their request.
Okay, we, we have a motion by Councilman Diaz-
Second.
-second by Councilwoman Cruz, discussion, all in favor? Unanimous. Twenty-two, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one of chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel regarding the Puerto Verde presidential permit request for the construction of a, of a cross-border rail and truck freight, freight, uh, bridge in Eagle Pass, Maverick County, Texas, and possible action in open session.
There's no action.
There's no action on this item? Twenty-three, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one of chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel regarding the Eagle Pass Touchstone Golf Contract, possible action in open session, including, but not limit to, not limited to modification, renegotiation, and/or termination of existing agreement, and authorizing city manager to negotiate and execute all documents related to same.
I would like to make a motion to terminate, uh, Touchstone and, um, direct administration to develop a plan, uh, to continue, uh, operations.
We have a, said motion by Councilwoman Cruz.
Said.
Second by Mayor Protem Davis, discussion, all in favor? It is unanimous. Twenty-four, executive session pursuant to section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, consultation with legal counsel regarding the request by Texas State University System for the City of Eagle Pass to participate in the infrastructure costs related to the donation of land for the first standalone building in Eagle Pass and the creation of a four-year university, possible action in open session regarding same. And this was just-
No action, Mayor.
No action.
And I'd just like for the record to reflect that, uh, the council has been informed that Mr. Barrera is, has called for a special joint workshop of all the stakeholders involved in this for July the twenty-seventh at two PM, and is at the ICT, and has recommended that all entities-
Yes, we will discuss this with, uh, Mr. Barrera and with the county, and no action needs to be taken in item twenty-four. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So do.
Motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Cruz, second by Mayor Protem Davis, all in favor? Unanimous. Meeting ends at nine thirty-six PM. Everyone have a good night.